2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. I am Candace Pryor, chairperson of the zoning board of appeals. This meeting is in accordance with executive orders from the governor to affect social distancing and mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We intend to conduct this meeting similarly to an in-person meeting. However, please be patient if there are technical issues. The zoning board of appeals is a nine-person volunteer board nominated by the mayor and approved by city council. First, we will hear from planning services represented tonight by Mr. John Barrett, and the applicant or his or her representative will make their presentation. Applicants will have five minutes in which to make their presentation. Staff will keep time and announce when 30 seconds are remaining. We may ask questions of either the city or the applicant. We will acknowledge any written comments received by the board. We will allow an appearing party to express their support or objections. Public comment will be via telephone only. To speak during any of the public comment periods, please call 888-788-0099 and enter meeting ID number 98342157975. This information is also available on the published agenda in the public notices section of the city website and on the broadcast of this meeting on CTN channel 16, AT&amp;T channel 99, and online at www.h2gov.org/watchctn. You need not have signed up in advance. In order to be called on to speak, callers must press star nine to raise their hand. Callers will then be called upon by city staff one by one using the last three numbers of their phone number. Upon being called on, callers will hear an audible announcement that the host is allowing them to speak. We ask that callers start by stating their name and address and speak from a quiet place and mute any background noise such as television so that we can hear you directly. City staff will announce when callers have 30 seconds left of their three-minute comment period. After three minutes, they will be placed on mute so that we can proceed to the next speaker. The board will discuss the appeal and formulate a motion to approve the appeal. Five affirmative votes of the board will be required for an appeal to be granted. Finally, any qualified party who is aggrieved by a decision of the board can appeal that decision to the Washtenaw County Circuit Court on a timely basis. Roll call. I am here. Mike Daniel.
Here.
Dave DeVarty. Chris Fraley.
Here. Dave DeVarty.
Chris is not here. Nicole Eisenman.
Here.
Todd Grant.
Here.
Elizabeth Nelson.
Here.
Charlotte Wilson.
Here.
Julia Good.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. Moving on to approval of the agenda. I will note that the petitioner for petition ZBA 20-0057 which Ridgeway Street has withdrawn their petition. So this item and the public comment portion will be removed from tonight's agenda. With this amendment, do I have any other comments on the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a question.
Yes.
With the removal of this from our agenda, if it is brought forward again, will all the people in the neighborhood be notified? Or all the previously expressed an interest about this?
Yes, it would be re-noticed as a brand-new petition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Do I have support? Support from Todd? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the May 27, 2020 ZBA meeting. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Charlotte, support?
Support, DeVarty.
Support from Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to public hearings. Petition ZBA 20-012508 Elm Street. John?
All right, the first petition before us this evening is ZBA 20-012508 Elm Street. Scott Plosson, representing the property owner, is requesting relief from Section 5.32.2, alteration to a non-conforming structure. The subject property is zone R4C, multiple-family dwelling, and is non-conforming as it does not meet the required lot area and required front setback for the district, excuse me, rear setback for the district. The applicant is seeking to increase the size and area of an existing dormer at the rear of the home. The required rear setback is 30 feet, and the residence is located 20 feet from the rear setback. The subject property is located on the south side of across the street from the Forest Hills Cemetery. The home was built in 1920 and is 1,805 square feet in size. The non-conforming single-family rental is certified by, from the rental housing department as a five-bedroom unit. The owner is proposing to raise the attic wall seven feet at the front and rear of the home to create more space on the attic level. The finished plans will accommodate a six-bedroom, six-bathroom unit. There will be three bedrooms on the second story and three bedrooms on the third story. I'm going to share my screen. Go to the PowerPoint presentation. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. The first slide, number three, is the location map. You see the subject property is highlighted in yellow. Just south of Geddes Avenue. The second slide, the slide number four, is the aerial of the the location map showing the existing conditions and surrounding neighborhoods. You see the subject parcel highlighted in yellow. You see Geddes Avenue, Forest Hills Cemetery. Slide number five is the zoomed-in aerial of the subject property, and they're going to be expanding the existing dormers in the front and rear. They're going from a current 1212 pitch to a 124 pitch, which would be a flatter roof. You'll see that coming up in the elevation drawings. Slide number six is the survey that was submitted with the application. Slide number seven is the existing first floor. You see a kitchen, foyer, living room, and dining room, stairs, covered porch. Existing second floor shows four bedrooms. And the third floor existing is one bedroom, or a total of five in the current structure. Proposed going to the new first floor. The second floor will have three bedrooms in it. And the new third floor, the attic area, will have the four, five, and six bedrooms. These are the elevations that were submitted with the application. You see the existing rear elevation, the rear dormer, and the side elevations. Next slide shows the existing front and right side elevations. These are the proposed new elevations, new front and new right side, and new rear and new left side. These are the photos of the property when I took my, made my inspection. You see it from the front. This is the side, the parking area. There's two driveways on each side. There's parking on both sides. Another view of the front of the house, and you see some of the construction going on. It's currently undergoing a complete interior remodel. This is the rear yard. Rear of the structure. And that is the end of my slide presentation. I'll take any questions that you may have at this time.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John? Yes, Julia.
There we go. John, I was a little, there isn't any permit posted at the house, so it looks very different than the pictures right now. And I was wondering if you knew what the permits are for? Like what they're currently doing, because it's pretty much, you know, the porch is gone, the windows are all gone.
They have building permits for a complete interior remodel. So they're, but while this was undergoing, they decided to do the extra bedroom in the attic and change the dormers and the height of the walls on that third floor. And so in order to do that, they submitted a revision on their existing building permit. And when I reviewed it, I told them, I said, no, you can't, you can't do that additional space in the attic on the third floor and the new dormer because it doesn't meet the rear setback. So in order to do that, you have to alter, go to the ZBA and get an alteration to a non-conforming structure.
Okay. I was just a little surprised and concerned when I saw the site because it was like wide open and there was, you know, just like wood laying around in an open dumpster. It didn't seem very safe.
It is an active construction site, so.
Okay.
What was the timeline of them asking for the variance? Like, are they in the middle of doing it in the hopes that this goes through tonight?
Well, if the alteration is not approved tonight, they can continue to do the work that they're doing now. It's just once they decide to change this entire dormer on the rear and expand it and the width all along the rear of it, it doesn't meet the 30-foot required setback.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Dave?
John, I didn't, wasn't looking at the parking situation. Could you call up the slides when you took the photos and tell me?
They're only required one parking space, so.
I understand.
They have, they have two on each side. I think they have four parking spaces total.
And are they considering doing it? I guess I'll ask them what they're considering. Do their, one more question. Do their plans have anything new happening to those fire escapes? Do their, one more question. Do their plans have anything new happening to those fire escapes? Or those emergency accesses or whatever they are?
I believe we'll have to ask the contractor, the representative of that. I can't remember offhand if those were part of it. I'm sure they are going to improve those stairs, though. We'll ask them.
I just want to state for the record that Chris Fraley has joined the meeting as of 6:15 PM. Any other questions for Steph? Elizabeth, yeah?
I was curious to see that, that map again. What is immediately behind it? I couldn't tell. There's like, is it a big building or a big parking lot? Like, what is that?
Oh, that.
In one of the pictures, it was obvious. Maybe it was like the aerial. Yeah, what's that?
It's an apartment building, multi-family building.
Oh, huh. Thanks.
Any other questions for Steph? All right, the petitioner would like to state their name. They'll have five minutes.
I just, I just promoted a minute, just a moment.
Hello?
Right, yeah, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Yay, all right. I can hear everybody now. I'm Scott Clausen. I'm representing the owner of 508 Elm Street in this petition. As John said, we already have a permit, and we've actively been working on the place. It's an active construction site. The new permit, we were adding two bathrooms to the second floor. There was going to be four bedrooms on the second floor, and the third floor was going to be two bedrooms. And then while we were during this, doing this process, is when we decided to see if we could raise that rear dormer that's into the, into the setback. So directly behind the building is a stone wall. It's probably about five or six feet high that holds back, that basically retains the parking lot for the apartment building that's directly behind there. So what we're trying to do is we would take one of the bedrooms that was going to be on the second floor and add it to the third floor, if we're allowed to do this, and also add two more bathrooms to the project. Again, it's a rental area. It's close proximity to the university. A lot of people walk to classes and don't require cars. There's easy four spots there. They could pull all the way up to the brick wall and probably get three on the one side and two on the other side and for parking-wise. But I guess that's it. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Yeah, Steve?
So what, do you have, are you redoing the fire escapes, the emergency egresses? Are those part of, part of the project or are those part of the building permit?
So, so actually, that stairway on the side is going to be removed. It's not required, and it's not going to be part of this building project.
Okay. And then the other, the other staircase is that remaining as-is? I think there was a second one.
So, so there's one staircase on, it's, I guess it's one continuous staircase, if you're talking about the exterior one, I assume.
Correct.
So that's on the left side of the house, but that's all just one staircase. So the whole thing is actually being removed.
So there won't be any exterior emergency egress at this point? And is that, doesn't the code require that for those third-story buildings?
No, no. No, it's not a requirement for, basically, fire escapes don't exist anymore in the code. It's, there can be a second egress. It's a single-family home. Each room has egress windows, but we don't have a fire escape. If that fire escape went up there, if we left it there, it would just basically be in one of the bedrooms on the third floor. So it's kind of
Gotcha.
only would benefit that one area.
David, if this was a duplex and that third floor was a separate unit, completely by itself, it didn't have egress through downstairs, then they would have to have that, that fire escape. But since it's all one single family and it's all accessible, all the floors are accessible between each other, they don't have to have that anymore.
Any other questions? Yes, Elizabeth?
Am I understanding correctly that the way the renovation would happen or the transformation that you want to do is going to have one-to-one bedroom to bathroom?
Yes, it seems to be what more and more landlords are starting to do, actually.
So then my question is, are you, are you going to rent them as individual units? And how, how does it work? How does it work if they, there aren't, aren't the right number of parking? Like, do you rent this house like altogether and they're just told, like, this is your driveway? Like, this is how many spaces you've got, like, work it out amongst yourselves? Or now that you've got bedroom to bathroom, are you going to be renting the unit separately? How does that work?
No, it's a six, it's a single-family house, six-bedroom. It's rented to six tenants. Usually, there are certain number of spots that are guaranteed. There may be three spots that are, that are kind of in the lease, I guess. And like I said, with the proximity to the university, a lot of students don't even have cars. So I mean, Ann Arbor and the university encourages, actually encourages that, especially in the higher-density areas, to use less vehicles and, you know, use public transportation or walk bicycles. And to answer the question about the bathrooms, the bathrooms are not, they're like, like they would be in your house. So they're not attached to the bedroom. It's, the bathroom is not inside the bedroom. It's not accessible. It's common in the hallway. And then the bedrooms are around it. They're just putting more, more bathrooms in. One of the bathrooms is in the basement. You know, one's on the first floor, then there's two on the second floor and two on the third floor.
Elizabeth, they cannot rent this out as separate units. They couldn't do six units. It has to remain single-family, because it's a non-conforming lot in the R4C district. So they couldn't even do a duplex without a variance on the lot area, because the lot size doesn't meet the R4C district, and it doesn't meet the district for the setbacks. So it has to remain single-family. And in R4C, the maximum you can have is six unrelated individuals in one unit. So they're going basically from five bedrooms to six.
Okay.
Which is allowed if you got, and then within the configuration of tonight, they're just expanding that dormer to get that sixth bedroom.
Yeah, I get it. And I, and I do, I do want to, I do want to comment, like, I hear what you're saying. Like, I was, when I was an undergrad, I never had a car. I'm astonished that students, undergrads, need cars. I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, and just, and just to reiterate, we do, we're already approved for six bedrooms, so we're not asking for extra bedroom. We're just asking for the space, I guess, to make the bedrooms bigger and move one more up to the third floor. And actually, it adds, lets us add two more bathrooms to the house.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you very much. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, please call in and raise your hand. If you have already called in, please raise your hand, and Steph will call on you by phone number.
Just a minute, in case anyone's calling in or raised their hand. All right, no callers have raised their hand.
All right, thank you, Kristen. With that said, we are in discussion. Dave?
This is an alteration to a non-conforming structure, which doesn't have quite as stringent criteria to meet as a variance would have. I, I'm in favor of this. It's, you know, they're staying within the existing footprint. I think they're improving the situation for the tenants that are living there. It's, it's, to me, it's an easy thing for me to support, so I'll be supporting this.
Thanks, Dave. Any additional discussion? Not, oh, Todd?
Yes, I agree, I agree with David. It's a nice upgrade, more bathrooms, and it's a high-density area. It's, we wouldn't walk in distance to campus. I think it's good.
Any other comments or, yeah, Dave, go ahead.
I'm prepared to make a motion when you're ready.
I think I'm ready, unless anyone else has any comments?
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
ZBA 20-012508 Elm Street. Alteration to a non-conforming structure. Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants relief from section 5.32.2. Alteration to a non-conforming structure to allow the expansion of the existing rear dormer.
A motion, do I have support? Or support from Nicole?
I'll support.
Todd?
Uh, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
DeVarty, yes.
I also vote yes. Julia?
Yes.
All right, the request is granted. Moving on to petition ZBA 20-013625 North Fourth Avenue. John?
Okay. Rob Fowler, representing the property owner, is requesting relief from section 5.32.2, alteration to a non-conforming structure. The subject property is zoned R4C, multiple-family dwelling, and is a non-conforming duplex that does not meet the required lot area, lot width, and setbacks for the district. The applicant is seeking to add habitable space in the basement, construct two new bedrooms and a bathroom to each unit. The proposed construction will alter each unit from a one-bedroom, one-bathroom to a two, to a three-bedroom, two-bathroom. The subject property is located on the west side of North Fourth Avenue and east of North Main Street. The residence is adjacent to North Main Park. The non-conforming duplex was constructed in 1910 and is 1,172 square feet in size. The first slide number 23 is the location map. You see the subject property highlighted in yellow in the middle of your screen, and North Park and Main, North Park is to the north and Main Street is to the west. Slide 24 is the location map. You see the existing conditions and surrounding neighborhoods. Slide 25 is the zoomed-in aerial photo of the non-conforming duplex. This is the survey that was submitted with the application by the applicant. The first floor plan drawing is showing the existing first floor. And it's the unit split right down the middle, and there's, it's kind of mirrored of each other, bedroom, bedroom, living room, kitchen. Next slide shows the first, new first floor. And the next slide shows the new basement proposed. Two bedrooms on each side and a bathroom on each side. They basically just mirror each other, both units. These are the photos that I took when I was at my, up for the inspection. This is the existing front of the house. You see North Main Park to the right. This is looking down the side of the house at the driveway. This is the rear elevation of the house. Back of the house, the driveway and existing parking. Adjacent park, and you see the survey stake. Looking down the north side of the house, and you see a budding property, multi-family unit, and North Main in the background. And this is the adjacent neighbor directly to the south. That is the end of my presentation, and I will take any questions that you may have at this time.
Thanks, John. Any questions for Steph? Chris?
So there's a shared driveway. They're not looking to change the footprint, are they? Everything's inside the existing?
That's correct. Everything's on the interior. They don't have any habitable space in the, in the basement currently, and they're looking to put the habitable space in the basement.
Are they, are they gutting the basement and rebuilding it, or what are we, what's the extent?
Yeah, there's, it's unhabitable space. Now they're creating new habitable space, so they're doing a full interior renovation and remodel of the basement.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions? Julia?
I just had a question about the front unit. It looks like the egress windows for the basement are going to be under the porch? Is that right? And then I was just wondering, because it looks like a stone porch. Like, if they're going to be changing the porch to, I wasn't quite sure how that would work.
I'm going to do a shared screen again. So are you?
So in the basement, in the new, in the newer bedrooms. So the
These right here?
Are on the sides, but the front, is that under the porch? Am I looking backwards?
Where my, where my cursor is right here, right these two?
Yeah.
I think we're going to have to ask the applicant that question. I'm not sure.
Any other questions? Dave, did you have something?
You're muted, Dave.
I'll wait till the applicant's up here. I was going to follow up with Julia's question.
Okay.
I think the applicant can clarify that.
Okay. Any other questions for John? All right, if the applicant would like to state your name for the record, you'll have five minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Rob Fowler. I'm representing the applicant for 625 North Fourth. And essentially, we have a duplex with one bedroom, one bathroom each, and we would like to add habitable space to make this more conforming with houses in area by finishing the basement. We do have room for additional parking in the back, so that won't be an issue. It would be mainly just a matter of, whatever we're doing will be, really won't be visible from the street. I think that's about all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Julia?
Hi, um, I was just wondering, uh, for the new bedrooms in the basement, it looks like in the rear unit, the egresses are on, there'll be side windows, but it looks like in the front, the egress is under the porch, which seems to be a solid, um, stone porch. So I was just kind of wondering how that would work.
I'm going to have to reconfigure that. We'll probably end up with more of a, uh, composite porch, and then, and then push the, uh, the porch back so that the egress windows are accessible.
Elizabeth?
So, so pushing the porch back, it, I mean, would it be like removing the porch? Like, I, I guess I'm trying to understand, um, the property will look quite a bit different if you do that, wouldn't it?
Um, it would. I, I just, uh, safety-wise, you know, these kids have to be able to get out of there to, uh, you know, to actually make these egress and have them under a porch. Won't, won't let them do that.
We'll say that the property's not historic, so if they do decide to demolish that, uh, stuff, existing stone porch, and whatever they do decide to go with, whatever type of materials or design, as long as that new porch meets the setbacks, it'll, if, they can do that by right by a building permit.
Yes, Chris?
Any reason why petitioner can't put those off to the side, the way the rear ones are? I mean, it seems like, why ruin the porch? Perfect functional porch, just put the windows somewhere else. Um, but the question that I have about those area wells on the side is, are we running into envelope line for the park? Or, I don't know, I saw the stake that you showed, John, but I don't know what the dimension is there off the side of the house.
So as long as those window wells are at grade, they can go up to a property line?
Okay, they're not considered, they can go outside basically the building envelope, but...
Yes, that's correct. They can go up to a property line, just like a driveway can, as long as it's that, as long as it's that grade.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nicole?
I think I'd just like to offer a clarification. I'm looking at that plan, and it looks like the porch is actually drawn on the left side of the drawing, which would be the unit, uh, one, and then unit two, the, where those egress windows are in question is actually, looks like it's the rear of the building.
Is that correct, Rob?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, so then that makes this whole conversation mute. That clears it up.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the pictures in relation to the drawing and realizing only later that the drawings are facing south.
It's, it's, it's an easy mistake to make. I agree.
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. I can, I, I can see it, how it happens. It's fine. I was confused, too.
Dave?
Yeah, I believe those egress windows are probably a code requirement, so they'll have to meet the building code, whatever they do.
That's correct.
Um, the, so it'll be on the building department to vet everything along those lines. The, another code requirement that I find in a lot of basements is the ceiling height. Are you, uh, encountering a need to, uh, read, to lower the floor in the basement to meet that, or are you good with that?
We're, we're right at seven foot, but the floor is kind of in a rough shape, so we're thinking, uh, we're gonna take a sample out, and as long as I, I have some more footing, I would probably drop it down.
As long as you don't go below the footings.
Exactly.
Right.
Because we'll, we usually tile the floors in these basements, and the floor that's down there, we, uh, is not, is not good enough for slate tile on, so we'll bust the floor out, and like I said, then we'll dig it down to footing level, so we can gain a little more headroom. So where our ductwork and stuff is, we're, you know, we have a little extra headroom.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you, Rob. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, please call in and raise your hand. If you have already called in, please raise your hand, and we will acknowledge your comments. We're ending in 150. You will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't hear you. Um, unmute me. Um, my name is Alicia Judah, and I live at 536 North Main, and my lot backs up directly to this particular property. I will say, I'm, I don't have concerns necessarily about making the house bigger, but if somebody could pull up the PowerPoint slide we went through and show a picture of the house, I would just like to point out that the house is covered in, like, roof tiles, um, and the maintenance on the house has always been lacking. Um, we moved in May 1st last year, so over a year. Um, my concern is that the work being done on the house is going to add to the shoddiness of how the house looks. Um, I guess that's my comment, and, yeah.
We, we plan completely redoing the entire house, new siding, new roofing, uh, new windows, so that this would be an attractive building.
Okay. Any additional details on what will be happening there? I haven't heard that mentioned yet in the presentation. I would have thought it would have been mentioned as one of the highlights of why this nonconforming building should be given this.
Hey, Candace, this isn't a debate between the petitioner and public.
The petitioner will have an opportunity to respond at the end of the public comment period. Did the caller have anything additional to add?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much. If there is anyone else who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. All right, caller ending in 102. You will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, yes, I'm on the telephone, and I also, there's a lag of, of two seconds on the, on the television as well, so it's an interesting experience. Uh, I, my question is, will, what will the appearance of the exterior of the building be like? Will, will this be some kind of, uh, cladding, or shingles, or what kind of exterior material are they proposing?
All right, we will, um, allow the petitioner time to respond to those questions at the end of the, the comment period, but we'll be sure to ask that. Did you have anything additional?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak on this petition? Caller ending in 455. You will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is John Baronic. I live at 620 North Fourth Avenue, which is directly across the street from the property in question. Um, the first thing, well, the first thing I'd like to point out is the drawing, say, Fourth Street and not Fourth Avenue, so I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that this is a Fourth Avenue property in Carytown area. Um, my main concern is, you know, in the application from the petitioner and from the letter that's, you know, um, of recommendation from the staff or whatever that, you know, cover letter is called. Um, the only reason given for allowing these basements to be added in, or these, uh, bedrooms to be added in the basement is that the property is in a student housing neighborhood, and it would then be similar to all the other houses in the student housing neighborhood, and that is exactly, I mean, there's, this is not a student housing neighborhood, and there are probably not one house in this area that I would term, you know, use that term "student housing" on. Um, there's a lot of, uh, young families, young professionals. There are some, you know, rental properties that do have some students, but, you know, largely graduate students living by themselves. That co, that house currently is occupied by a thirty-something professional in the front and a fifty-something professional in the back, so, you know, this is not really typical for this neighborhood. So I, I just have concerns about kind of this substandard, low-ceiling basement living space being created and cramming a lot of people into a very small house and creating more parking problems and things like that. I mean, this is a very crowded street with the farmer's market, and, you know, there is a very dense neighborhood. Um, so I'm just generally not in favor of, you know, cramming a lot of people into a small property like that, you know, especially in this already fairly, uh, crowded neighborhood. And, um, I also, I, I guess I would like to understand that, you know, if this is approved, would this allow the petitioner to, um, you know, raise the house and put a new, you know, have to dig out and create a whole new foundation for the building, because the way the plans are submitted, it's only showing new interior walls and not a new foundation? So I think that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this petition? If so, please raise your hand. All right, I think that's it. Thanks, Kristin. Um, all right, Rob, would you like to, um, respond to some of the comments, um, that we received during the cup, the comment period specifically with regard to, um, the treatment of the building exterior?
Yes, we want to completely redo it. We will, uh, it'll be a, probably a vinyl siding type of thing, but all new windows, all new roof, so, um, new overhangs, a complete exterior remodel. So we can clean all that, uh, because it's not an attractive house at this point.
All right, are there any other questions for the petitioner based on, uh, public comment we received? Yes, Julia?
Um, I had a question. Uh, you know, I don't know, um, what Ann Arbor does, or even if that is asbestos siding, but it does have the kind of look of the old asbestos shingle siding. And if it was that, are there special rules in Ann Arbor for removal safely?
Yeah, there, um, we will have it, um, tested, and then, yeah, then we have to take precautions and have it hauled away. Uh, everything has to be bagged up, cleaned up, so we'll, we'll find out before we, we, um, before we start demolition, what, what we actually have there.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we're in discussion. Thank you. Todd?
Yes, I think the callers and Mr. Fowler are in agreement. This is not a particularly attractive piece of property, and we have to look and make sure that what they're planning on doing to the property won't have a detrimental effect. I would say that probably anything they do to this property will have, make it an improvement over what currently exists.
Dave?
As the previous one, this, uh, is an alteration. It's, this requirements, or the standards they have to meet are less stringent than a full variance. Um, I do sympathize with the neighborhood residents who were calling out the exterior look of the property, and I, I, the final speaker who spoke to the nature of the people living in this neighborhood, this is a Carytown neighborhood. It isn't, uh, is like a student neighborhood like the Elm Street that we re, uh, considered previously, and it is, uh, there are forces, I think, market forces driving single families and professionals into this neighborhood. So it is a changing neighborhood. I, years ago, when I was growing up, it was an African-American neighborhood. I see if we approve this, and they are able to put those extra bedrooms, will increase the rent, uh, flow from this building, and actually should give the economic wherewithal to make significant exterior improvements. Um, so I, I see this as potentially, by providing this, um, approval of this alteration, we give the owner of the building the economic wherewithal to improve the way it looks and to enhance its, uh, presence in the neighborhood. So I, I'm gonna support this.
Chris?
I would, uh, was about to say the, almost exactly the same thing. Um, this is R4C, so, um, John, what's, this could be how big? I mean, how many, how many apartments or people could you have on this site? And I'm, I'm a little concerned when the neighbors say, "Oh, well, this is gonna be too many people, and it's too dense," and it's like, "Well, this is downtown. This is where we want that to be." Um, it's R4C. This is a, this is a multi-family, uh, zoning. Um, so I, I, I'm a little concerned when the neighbors say, "Oh, no, we don't want you to do that," because he's allowed to in this zoning. And I think, uh, to, uh, Mr. DeVarty's, uh, point, that it's important that we allow these landowners to do this, because this is, you can't constrain their use of the property that way when it's his own to allow people in, and allow to increase the, the, the site to more density. That's, that's about all I have to say. I, I support this. We're not changing the footprint. We're not going up. Um, we are staying within, basically, the confines of what's there. If he goes down a foot, he goes down a foot. He makes it habitable space. I think this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other comment? Dave?
I just want to comment, um, in it to Chris. I, I think it's important, I hope that the owner of the building is motivated to see the, uh, what, what this building looks like, and that the fact, if we approve this, we will increase the cash flow from the building, and hopefully the owner will be able to, and willing, to invest in up, significantly upgrading the, uh, appearance of the building. So it'll be really an improvement to the neighborhood. Now, I don't, I know they don't have to, but it would be my hope that they do.
Sorry, sir, we're in discussion.
I'm sorry.
Anyone else from the board that wishes to speak? Yeah, Nicole?
I guess, I just want to say one quick thing is that, um, seeing how we're all working, or many of us working from home these days, there may not even be, uh, three separate people living in those, that new unit could be a couple, and they each have their own office space, so it may not even increase the density.
Good point. Any other discussion, or are we ready for? Any other discussion or are we ready for motion? Nicole?
I can make a motion.
All right, thanks.
Have to get my two screens set up ready. Motion for ZBA twenty dash zero one three six two five North Fourth Avenue. Alteration to a non-conforming structure. The zoning board of appeals hereby grants relief from section five point three two point two alteration to a non-conforming structure to allow the construction of four bedrooms and two bathrooms in the existing duplex basement. This construction will result in a total of two units, each with three bedrooms and two bathrooms.
Thanks. I have a motion. Do I have support? Support from Chris? Mike?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Dave?
DeVarty, yes.
I also vote yes. Charlotte?
Yes.
Chris? Nicole?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Julia?
Yes.
All right, the request is granted. Moving on to petition, ZBA twenty dash zero one four one five zero two Long Shore Drive. John?
Wabix Fuchs, property owner, is seeking a variance from section five point eighteen point five, averaging an established front building line. The subject property is zoned R1B, single family, and the average front setback is thirty-seven feet six inches. The applicant is seeking to reduce the front setback to thirty feet in order to complete an addition that will increase the existing home from one thousand sixteen square feet in size to two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet in size with a two hundred square foot terrace above the existing garage. The subject property is located west of Pontiac Trail, adjacent to the Argo Nature Area and east of the Huron River. The existing residence was constructed in nineteen fifty-one and is one thousand square feet in size. The lot size is ten thousand three hundred and sixty-seven square feet and the home is situated on a peninsula-shaped style lot. The owners are proposing to expand and modernize the existing home. Expansion improvements include the living room, kitchen and dining room, entry hallway, bedrooms and bathroom. The first map, slide number thirty-eight, is the location map. You see the highlighted subject parcel in yellow just east of the Huron River and Long Shore Drive coming around the corners. And Argo Drive is right here. Slide thirty-nine is the existing conditions and surrounding neighborhoods. Slide forty is the zoomed-in aerial photo of the subject property. And you see the existing building footprint. Slide forty-one is the survey that was submitted with the application by the applicant. The next slide is a site plan that was submitted. The thirty-seven foot six inch goes to the dash line right here where my cursor is showing and it comes around. And so the thirty-seven point, the thirty-foot setback that variance request that would reduce it, the blue area that's encroaching past that hatched area would be the sections of the proposed addition that will be beyond the average front setback. So it's all this front here in the blue, coming over here in the blue. The front setback comes around the curve and portions of this garage, these two slivers of the garage, if you will, will be encroaching into that setback as well. The next slide is a slide that was submitted by the applicant showing building envelopes of adjacent properties. And you can see their envelope they're showing here as opposed to the adjacent properties surrounding their envelopes that they get to work with. So the applicant will speak a little bit more to that. These are the floor plans that were submitted by the applicant. You see, it's the bedrooms with closets, all these new red lines or new walls. There'll be some interior improvements. Basically, an entire gut and remodel of the existing home. This is the basement plan, part of the basement and the finish and the garage. These are the elevations that were submitted with the application. South elevation, looking directly from the street at the garage and then the terrace area above the garage. East elevation. Photos that were submitted by the applicant with the application showing the existing conditions. And these are the photos that I took when I made my inspection. You see the front of the house and its existing condition. This is looking around the corner on Long Shore going down towards Argo. And you see one of the survey stakes in the background. This is looking directly at where the garage is going to be proposed. Looking, this is looking east. This is looking down the side of the house, the existing garage. Picture of the garage. This is the abutting property that faces Argo and the backyard of the existing property. And this is the rear elevation, existing rear elevation of the house. And across the way on Long Shore and Huron River is off in the distance. That's the end of my presentation. I'll take any questions that you have at this time.
Thanks, John. Any questions for staff? Dave?
This is a question I frequently ask on these where you use the averaging to establish a setback based on any different setback averaging. What would the setback be without the averaging in this?
It would be thirty feet.
So really, they're asking to establish a new setback basically in compliance with existing zoning, except for, with the exception of that averaging factoring in.
That's correct. The property that faces Argo is at forty feet. And then you come around the property and then the eastern side adjacent to the existing house is at thirty-five. So when you average those two properties out, you get the thirty-seven point five.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for John? Julia?
John, and the main thing they seem to be saying is the practical difficulty has to do with energy efficiency. And I didn't quite understand that because I'm no expert on it, but it seems to me two stories can be totally energy efficient. Is there?
Well, I'm no energy efficiency expert either, so I don't want to speak for the applicant. If that is their, one of their points of hardship in this case, I'm going to let them speak to the, establish their own hardships and try to convince the board of their need for the variance request.
Okay.
Chris, did you have a question as well?
Yes, thank you. Is, so they're adding a garage potentially. Is the old garage leaving or is that going to stay as an existing structure? It's going to be there?
I am under the impression that they're going to demolish that, but I'm, let's ask the applicant that as well.
All right.
I think that's going to be demolished, though.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for John? All right, if the petitioner would like to begin their presentation, they will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Wabix Fuchs. And together with my wife Joanna, we are the new owners of this property at fifteen oh two Long Shore in Ann Arbor. And, well, just a few things I would like to say. We purchased the property and, well, we finalized everything in April. And since then, we tried, we started to actually plan what we were going to do with it. The things that, or the things that we wanted to do from the beginning, they turned out to be difficult. And the reason for it was exactly what Mr. Barrett actually showed you on this appendix B, on that diagram showing the envelopes of the sites surrounding ours and then ours as well. Turns out that our property, because of it being corner property and therefore it has two front setbacks and one back.
Believe he got muted.
Yes, sir, I believe that you're muted. If you could unmute yourself and continue.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was pressing the spacebar to do it. But so our property, only twenty-three percent of the actual area of the property is available to be for construction. Whereas anything in the neighborhood and anything in the city is much larger than that, averaging between thirty percent and fifty percent. So the reason for it obviously is this situation that we are at the corner and we are in the situation that the two or the front setback is averaged between the two adjacent properties. If it were to be actually set at thirty feet, which is standard for R1B, we would be at thirty percent of the buildable area on the site. And that would be very helpful for us to actually build the home that we are hoping for. Now, in terms of the, in terms of the energy efficiency, the current property, the current envelope would allow to build a building that is relatively narrow. Right? Narrow buildings, you know, they have by nature larger amount of external walls and therefore they are not as energy efficient as buildings which are deeper. They have deeper tract between the external walls and therefore allow for the warmer part of the building to be deeper as well. And that's the reason for this argument or this difficulty with the energy efficiency. And the reason why we wouldn't want to go up is also to maintain the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood, all buildings within this area are one-story buildings, possibly with with the attic space, but majority of them are single-floor buildings. Further up on Long Shore Drive, there is one building which went up two stories and it actually is, at least based on our conversations with our new neighbors, is highly disliked by the neighbors. So we wouldn't want to create a similar situation in, you know, our construction. And this is, this is pretty much it. You know, we would like to actually sort of invest in this neighborhood by upgrading this existing structure and building it into a home where we would like to live. And like I said, and someone asked that question, all we are asking is that the front setback is set at its standard distance of thirty feet. And we are not, we are not asking for any further adjustment, the front setback, but to be restored to the thirty-foot distance, which is standard for, unless obviously the calculation of the average distance between the adjacent properties is applied.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the petitioner?
Yes, Mr. Fuchs, I have two questions. First, I intuit that if you were to build a two-story house, you would not need the front setback variance requirement. Is that correct, sir?
Well, essentially, considering what I've heard today, I would still need a variance because my current house is already, or the current structure is already actually within the current setback of the thirty-seven point five feet. There is this sort of northwest wing of the existing house, which is already about four feet inside that setback area. So to do anything to the house, I would need a variance nevertheless, right? Because alterations to those structures need variance.
Second question, sir. If the home were two stories, would you block the view of the river of any of your neighbors? I don't think so, but you're there.
I would, probably I would not because the property, I'm just honest with you. The property that is sort of facing both the Long Shore and Argo is a little further down from our property. So they would, well, I guess, well, I would create a wall, quite a wall there, right? Behind there or in the back of their house. And so that would not be very pleasant. However, I would not block the view, right? Because they don't have that view as of now.
Thank you.
But I might actually block a lot of sunlight from this direction on the other hand. Yes.
I'm interested with regard to building a second story. That's kind of a red herring as far as I'm concerned. I mean, two-story houses are extremely common. And John, could you address what the height limitations are there on that site? Well, not the site, but in the zoning?
Thirty feet maximum height for a single-family home in that district.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Couple of questions for the petitioner. First, if this is approved, would that current detached garage be coming down since you'd be having an attached garage?
We didn't plan on it. Both my wife and myself, we are architects and artists and we thought about using it as a sort of art studio.
Okay. And secondly, have you presented your plans? It sounds like you're cognizant of concerns of the neighbors in regard to another structure in the neighborhood. Have you presented your plans to your neighbors and asked their thoughts and asked them whether they would support this petition at the zoning board?
We didn't ask, I didn't ask them to support actively the petition. However, well, the neighbor directly sort of northeast from us along Long Shore, that, that house is occupied by someone who is not the owner, but he's just sort of house-sitting for, you know, a few years now. So we didn't talk with that person. With everybody else, we spoke along Long Shore and our neighbor at the corner of Argo and they're very supportive of our plans. And, you know, I don't mean to speak derogatively about, you know, other people, but they, in a sense, they addressed the issue of that building along Long Shore further north on Long Shore being an eyesore, that they wouldn't want to see another one like this.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Julia?
I'm sorry, I got a little confused. It seemed like you were saying that the current house is non-conforming.
That's true. It is true. If, Mr. Barrett, could you please bring up the site plan? The actual, yes, there you are. So in the north corner of the, yes, where it says existing house, that sort of slice of the existing house that is about, you know, three, four feet deep, that's already that's already on the outside of the, of the building envelope. Of the current building envelope is calculated as an average between the adjacent properties.
So I was kind of wondering when I saw the sheet, but this is coming before us, not as a non-conforming.
Well, in a sense, I'm asking, or we are asking to approve for us the adjustment of the, of the setbacks, right? So that the non-conforming, and I didn't know about that non-conforming. It came out in the discussion with Mr. Barrett about what rules specifically should be applied to this in this situation, because the situation is quite unique because the irregular shape of the property, the corner side, the corner side and those two buildings which are pushed back further from the, from the property line. So there are quite a few conditions that we kind of looked at with Mr. Barrett as as sort of decisive in our, in our case. And in the end, this is, the petition is to adjust the zoning or the setbacks, right, to 30 feet, that would eliminate the non-conforming problem of the existing house that was built in 1951. So I don't know what was the zoning coordinates back then. And then allow us to build the house based on our project.
Well, Julia, if, since this section right here is non-conforming, if they just did this and continued along that exact same plane and just did this little section right here, that would be an alteration to a non-conforming structure. But all this blue, which is all going to be brand-new, and the terrace and the garage and all that, all, where all this is all in the setback. So all new construction has to meet the requirements of the setbacks, and if it doesn't, then it has to be a variant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Another question for John. If that new addition, which is more to the south here, if that were built, okay, so you said that little piece further to the north, if that chunk was in there, it would be an alteration to a non-conforming structure. If everything that's at the south end of this were within the 37 feet, would it be, would it need a variance?
No.
So if all of this was within that dotted line, even though it's new addition to the house, significant new addition to the house, it would not require a variance?
If it meets the 37 feet, six inches.
Gotcha.
But what, but what's being proposed is not.
I, I see. Thank you.
Yep.
If, can I add something here? Yes, the proposed building essentially builds up on the existing structure. We would like to maintain the same front line, you know, front facade of the existing structure. We wouldn't want to sort of push it back. And, you know, those are the principal reasons, right, for the shape of the structure. Also, that issue of the sort of ecological or energy-efficient structure that would be of, of sufficient depth, right, to ensure that the, the house is warm enough inside.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you very much. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, please call in and raise your hand. If you have already called in, please raise your hand and staff will call on you or comment.
Callers have raised their hand.
All right, we are in discussion then. Chris?
There we are. It seems to me that when I'm looking at the site plan, there's not much of a building envelope in this site as is. They, if they would have been setting the existing structure, what looks to me like, oh, four to five feet to the east towards, you know, I guess towards Pontiac Trail, they would barely just make it into the, into the, into the envelope. He's got the double problem of it being a corner site and therefore having to have some weird, the, I can't remember what the terminology is, but it seems like this is a, excuse the term, but this is a bastard site. It's a small one. It has a small window. It's constrained by the curvature. It's constrained by the corner. And he's still, if, if we moved that line to the 30-foot line, that if we move the setback to the 30-foot line, that's still a pretty good distance off the, off the street, you know, as a setback. It's not like he's bumping up to the sidewalk or something. I, I guess I'm going to support this because otherwise, what's going to happen to this house is just going to sit there like it has for the last 20 years. I lived in the neighborhood for almost 25 years. You know, I think we, we owe it to the property owner to give him the opportunity to make something of this site. It's, it's very constrained. And, and I think that, that we can allow something good to happen here. And the neighbors, as he said, you know, do we, do we have any documentation on neighborhood support? That's really my question to Mr. Vladik.
No, I do not have any documentation of neighborhood support by no means. No, I just, it was actually, you know, the most welcoming neighborhood that we ever lived in. And I did not think about documenting, you know, the, the conversations we had. But since we actually started to, because, you know, the pictures that Mr. Barrett took were taken when we didn't cut the grass yet, but we have been actually maintaining the lawn, making sure that, you know, that the house does not look abandoned, well, before we actually get to the renovation of the house. And every time we are there, someone, someone else comes up and they say how wonderful it is that, you know, we are moving in, that, you know, we, we have a good conversation. So, no, I didn't think about documenting any of that.
That's all I have to say. Thank you. I would support this.
And us. There is, there is a caller who has been called in this whole time. His hand is not raised. It's possible that there was an issue during the public hearing when they were trying to raise their hand. Do you?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, caller ending in seven two nine. You have three minutes to speak.
My name is Tom Craft and my wife and I live at fifteen hundred Longshore, which is the property right behind fifteen oh two. And we are in support of the plan for the new addition to the house. We've spoken with the, the new owners and are pretty happy with the design. We were excited to hear that they weren't going to go up two stories because the current design that they have fits better, we feel, with the neighborhood. We, we know the house that they're referring to, which is a couple of blocks down. But anyway, most of the houses along Longshore are either one and a half story or a single story. And we just feel that it's a, a, a good design that they've come up with and we're in support of, of any changes that need to be done.
All right, thank you very much. Back to discussion, Dave.
I think Nicole might have been ahead of me.
Okay, Nicole.
Thank you. So there's just a couple of things that I want to say. First is I just want to acknowledge that my partner with whom I share a house submitted a letter in regard to this application. Having no influence on me, but it's, I just want to acknowledge that that's, that's out there. And this is actually a property in my neighborhood. So I'm very familiar with the site and it's a lovely property, a lovely location. And I can really appreciate what the new owners are interested in doing here. But when I look at our standards, I kind of, I struggle with seeing a property that is being designed within the, or beyond, within the setback. Corner properties aren't unique in the city. Ones that require averaging a front setbacks aren't unique really, so that's our standard number one. Standard number four, this self-imposed practical difficulty to design beyond the setback. And then the standard number five, which I think is maybe most convincing to me is that the variance shall be the minimum variance, it will make possible reasonable use of the land or structure. And there has been a house there from, since the 1950s that existed within that existing footprint. There is even space beyond that house to build. So I think it can be done with, within the existing footprint. And then it also, just the last thing, it also is concerning to me to approve a variance that is kind of generic. Thirty feet is, everything that's designed right now is within that 30 feet. But I'd rather be approving a variance that is actually relative to what is beyond the required setback rather than a generic 30 feet, which would allow somebody in the future to build out as much as possible there. Thank you.
Um, quick question to John. I didn't see any letters in our packet. Were there letters of support or objection that we saw on this petition?
That I'm aware of, Kristen?
Yes, I'm checking in here. Was in the, the third published agenda.
All right, while Kristen's looking that up, Dave, did you have comments?
I, you know, for me, this is a tough one. Generally, I, I don't like the way the averaging works sometimes because I think it really works to prevent stuff from happening that would be beneficial to the neighborhood. And I've seen it used against front porches, for example, in the past. The, however, I agree with Nicole. We have, for a variance, we have very strict standards that the petitioner has to meet in order to have the variance granted. There is significant space and one of the questions I asked our zoning coordinator is if they did most of what they proposed on the south and just kept it within the 37 feet, if they could have done an alteration to a non-conforming structure as opposed to a variance, which is much more stringent requirements in order to meet the, the standards to grant the variance. So I'm strong, despite the fact that somebody in the neighborhood spoke in favor of this, in fact, an immediate next-door neighbor, I'm, I think I'm going to have to lean against this one just because of how stringent our standards are and that they can, they can do a significant addition and not need the variance in order to do that. So I don't see that they need the variance in order to make a significant change to this existing structure, which is perfectly habitable the way it is.
Um, yes, I thought Nicole articulated well some of the concerns I'm having and David are added to that. The package noted that this is the last home in the neighborhood to be renovated. And it's wonderful to have an architect designing something for their own home. My limited experiences, maybe Nicole has a different opinion, but architects always take great care in designing the homes they're going to live in. But being an architect also cuts both ways. I'm really not convinced of this avoiding a two-story because insulation is more difficult. Construction materials have improved a lot in the last 20 years. You can get a very large R factor by just piling on the insulation. That's not a problem. It's a wonderful site, but as Nicole mentioned, corner lots are very common. I grew up in a corner lot. It was very large. I had a mower lot. So I'm not necessarily in favor of corner lots for personal reasons, but that's totally irrelevant. But more to the point, because Mr. Fuchs is an architect, it's not, I'm not convinced that he couldn't design a wonderful home of a couple of thousand net square feet, which is what he would like, within the existing constraints. And maybe it would be partly two-story, maybe not. I just don't think he's exhausted his, his options here. And as wonderful a presentation as he did, I think I'm going to have to vote against him and his wife.
Yeah, Kristen?
That communication regarding this, I know, is included in the most recent agenda that was sent out today at three twenty-three. It's also published online.
Okay, thanks. I think I might have opened an old copy of the agenda, so maybe that's why I didn't see it. Let's see here. Yes, Julia?
I'm, I'm having some problems with it. One, because I'm a city girl, so a 30-foot setback seems gigantic to me. So like on that stance, you know, and it seems like a nice design and everything, but I'm agreeing with what other people said that they're, they don't, they bought a very small house and they can make it much bigger without getting a variance. So I'm kind of leaning against this too.
I will note quickly that we did receive a letter from seven one one Argo Drive, Andrew Pinek, expressing concern over the variance request. Elizabeth?
I just, I just have a quick question on our policy around conflicts. Is it, it, it did, did anyone consult with our legal department about the appropriateness of, of having a partner who expressed an opinion on a property? Did we get a, a legal opinion about that? Is it, is it adequate to simply announce that you aren't influenced by the person you live with?
I think our general practice in the past has been to announce the conflict and if other members of the board see it as a conflict, we could ask the potential board member to recuse themselves from voting on the petition.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Thanks.
I don't think this would be a conflict unless Ms. Eisman had a relationship as far as working or personal with the applicant. Just merely living in the neighborhood, unless there is a vested interest in business or personal relationship, then if they don't know each other and she doesn't feel like there's a conflict of interest and doesn't have anything involved or at stake, then I don't think there would be one.
Chris?
John, could you address a question that I have here? If I went around the corner to Tom, who was just talking, or to the neighbor further out Longshore, what is the setback that they have to deal with in a non-corner situation?
You talking about this one right here?
Yeah, and Tom's to the, directly below your cursor.
This one?
Uh, okay, he's a, he's got a weird setback too. Uh, okay, he's a, he's got a weird setback too because he's on that corner, but he went to the east of Tom's house. What, what would be the setback? It looks like it's thirty feet, maybe.
It's, well, this house was thirty-five. And so if this house right here is in line with it, which it looks like it's pretty close, it would be thirty-five. Then now they would be, they would be at thirty-five all the same plane. It's this house that's at forty that's pulling the average back for them. This is forty and this is thirty-five, which comes out to thirty-seven.
Seven and a half, yeah, okay. All right. I was thinking that they had a thirty-foot setback earlier and I, and I guess that's not the case.
That's correct. And, and that's part of the hardship is the uniqueness in the shape of the lot and the average front setback from the adjacent properties.
Any further discussion?
Can I say something else?
Sorry, sir, we're in discussion. There's no further discussion. Are we ready for a motion? Dave?
ZBA twenty dash zero fourteen fifteen oh two Longshore Drive. Variants based on the following findings and in accordance with the established standards for approval. The zoning board of appeals hereby grants the following variants from chapter fifty-five Unified Development Code Section five point eighteen point five, averaging an established front building line. A variance seven feet and six inches from the required front setback in order to construct an eleven hundred sixty-two square foot addition with a two hundred square foot terrace above the garage. And should I read findings or do we need to put that in place?
Uh, you can.
It says, read one or more of the findings. I'll read a couple of them. That the alleged practical difficulties are exceptional and peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance and result from conditions that do not exist generally throughout the city. That the alleged practical difficulties that will result from a failure to grant the variance include substantially more than mere inconvenience inability to attain a higher financial return or both. That allowing the variance will result in substantial justice being done, considering the public benefits intended to be secured by this chapter. The practical difficulties that will be suffered by a failure of the board to grant a variance and the rights of others whose property would be affected by the allowance of the variance. That, I, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks. I have a motion. Do I have support?
Support.
Support from Mike. Charlotte.
No.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Todd.
No.
Dave.
I've already know.
Julia.
No.
I also vote no. Nicole.
No.
The request is denied. Moving on to petition ZBA twenty dash zero one five one twenty Packard Street. John?
That's Chad, a property owner, is requesting relief from section five point thirty-two point two, alteration to a non-conforming structure. The subject property is zoned R four C, multiple family dwelling. The structure is a single-family home that is being converted to a duplex. The conversion requires compliance with the setbacks for the R four C district. The existing porch on the eastern side of the property is located six feet, eight inches from the property line and the code requires a minimum twelve-foot side yard setback. The subject property is located on the south side of Packard Street between South Main Street and South Fourth Avenue. The home was built in nineteen oh one and is three thousand one hundred, one hundred eighty-five square feet in size. Currently, the lot is conforming as it is six sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty square feet. Existing single-family home is being converted to a duplex. The first level, unit A, will contain six bedrooms and the, as will second level, unit B. The existing porch is two hundred and forty-two square feet in size. It's approximately twenty-two feet by eleven feet. You'll turn your attention to my screen, the monitor. The first slide sixty-one is the location map. You see the subject property highlighted in yellow. The next slide is the location map showing existing conditions and surrounding neighborhoods. And the next slide shows the zoomed-in aerial photo of the existing property. This is the survey that was submitted, the application. And the porch, existing porch is right here. On the eastern side of the house and it is going to, the applicant is seeking to keep it and let it remain. Otherwise, everything about the property is conforming. Initially, when they contacted me, they were going to demolish the porch and the alteration would not be required, but since they decided to keep it, now the alteration is required just to keep this, this porch on this side of the house. Like I said, everything else is conforming. These are the photos that I took of the property when I was at, made my site visit. This is the front of the house and you see the porch over the fence right there. This is the adjacent property and you see a little bit closer up portion of the, the porch. This is going around the back of the house. I'm standing in the backyard and looking directly at the existing porch. Here's the edge of the foot of, the floor of the porch in relationship to the fence and the side property line. Just a view of the porch and looking out in the rear yard and you see the ceiling of the porch. It's the rear of the house. It's currently undergoing a massive renovation to a duplex. Looking from the rear yard towards the out porch. And these are photos that were submitted by the applicant prior to the construction. That's all I have at this time. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thanks, John. Questions for staff, Nicole?
Is there access to that porch from inside the house?
Yes, I believe there is. Yeah, I, there's, I think there's a door there. Yes.
Charlotte.
The porch original to the house? If you know.
I do not know if it's original to the house. In your packet, I think you can see one of the photos that shows the doors of the porch. Lean into it. You got that? You see that on that one?
Thank you. Dave.
So is the only reason this is coming before us is because they don't want to remove the porch?
That's a, that's right.
Everything, everything that they're doing that's new is in compliance with our zoning.
That's correct. The lot is, the lot is sixteen thousand square feet. They only need eighty-five hundred. The lot meets the lot width. All the setbacks meet except this porch. And at first they, when they had first applied for the original building permits, they were going to demolish it and then they decided to keep it.
So just by keeping an existing piece of this, they need the alteration. Nothing else they're doing is impinging on any of our zoning restrictions.
That's correct. And if they were to keep it a single family, we, they wouldn't even have to come to the ZBA, but since it's being converted to a duplex.
I see.
That, that makes it, they need this, they need the alteration, but they're not expanding the porch. They're not increasing it in size. They're just going to leave it. And since it doesn't meet that twelve-foot side setback, we need this alteration. They, they need the alteration.
Chris.
Is this height historic?
It is not.
Okay, and my question really is that porch is older than all of us and this is what's holding us up? I kind of have a problem with that.
It's, it's because it's self-imposed. It was a single family, but since they're converting it to a duplex, then they, instead of having a five-foot side setback, they now have a twelve-foot side setback.
With regard to, you know, historic preservation and all, I think I, I even if you are, one, changing hands and two, moving it to a duplex, just seems a darn tootin' shame to get rid of all that nice woodwork.
But they're trying to keep it now, so that's why the request is before us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Todd.
Yeah, I think actually Julia had her hand up first. Maybe she's withdrawn her question. No, okay. So I, Chris, you sort of hit the logic problem I'm having. I'm having a mental moment. Usually people come for, before us and say, I want to add a porch. And we say, well, it's going to go into the setback. Here, they already have the porch. And I guess it's sort of a technical trick isn't the right word, but because it's now changed to a duplex, there's subject to a different side variance or, or front variance. And so it's strange, but they've already got the porch. That, that's the problem I have.
Well, you gotta understand that the construction, that their, the conversion from a single family to a duplex changes the setback requirements.
Yes, you said that well. Thank you. Yep, yep.
Julia.
So I'm a little confused about the process, John. If you could explain. They got the permits duplexing this.
That's correct.
And they were able to get it because they said they were going to tear down the porch. If they had said, we're going to leave the porch and we want to duplex it, they would have had to have come before the ZBA.
That's correct. On the original building permit, they had the porch as demolition.
Yeah, so.
They submitted a revision and said, we want to keep it now. And then when I got that revision, I said, well, then you have to go to the ZBA. And, and the applicant and I worked together on it. He, he was aware of it prior to all the, all the work taking place.
That's kind of my major concern. You, that you get a permit because you say you're going to bring it into a conforming structure. And then during construction, you say, well, no, actually I want to keep it non-conforming is my concern about this one. It almost feels like if they want to leave it conforming, then their permit should be pulled because it was granted under different circumstances and then they should have to come back to us to ask to be duplexed. Which I know.
They can do a duplex by right, but in order for, if they didn't come to the ZBA and get this alteration, then that porch would have to be removed. And if they didn't reboot move it, then they would have a violation. So the setbacks normally are for R four C and a single family revert to an R one C. And, and then this is now there's twelve feet in that side. It's a duplex. Does that make sense? I, I'm not sure if I'm.
Let me, if it's.
For some reason, this is an easy one for me, but I don't know why there's confusion, but go ahead.
When they came to get the duplex, was the building non-conforming?
No.
Okay. Okay, I thought the porch was so close. It made it not conforming, but because it was single, it wasn't too close.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, did you have another question?
Yeah, I get that it, it has a certain smack of bait and switch. And I get that it's going to change its standing because it's going to become a duplex. If the old, the lady that used to own this was Flying Dutchman. If she still lived in that house and decided she wanted to change it to duplex, would the same situation exist because the ownership didn't change?
And that's nothing to do, it has nothing to do with the ownership. It has the, has to do with the change in the structure and the number of units.
In the, okay, in the standing of how the structure is being utilized. Going from single family to duplex. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for John? All right, if the petitioner would like to state their name for the record and then they will have five minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Satya Narayan Chadha. And just as a quick presentation, I, I think what John summarized it well, our intent initially was to remove the porch and convert it to a duplex. And in fact, that was the permit that we were granted. And just to address the, I guess, the bait and switch comment, I, if, if necessary, I think we're happy to remove the porch. But I think the building, and this is something that we discovered, and I wasn't entirely sure of the quality of the porch or so on. We thought that it would be better to retain it. There is access to the porch from what will be two bedrooms currently. As far as I know, and I, I can't speak with certainty, the porch certainly existed before I, I purchased the property, but I believe it was original, but I, I can't guarantee it. The, the workmanship and the the roofline and so on seemed like it could have been original, but I, I can't guarantee it for sure. Like I said, I think with, with the porch being retained on the building, I think it's actually going to look, make the property look better. And I think it'll have a, a nice use for students that are going to have bedrooms immediately attached to that area. But again, if, you know, if the decision by the, the council is for us to be bound by the permit that we were granted, I think we are prepared to remove the porch, but I just wanted to make sure that I took the opportunity to seek an appeal.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Nicole.
Do you intend to leave it as an open porch?
Yes, we are not, uh, we're not planning on maintain, making any changes to the porch other than maybe painting it or maybe just fixing any structural deficiencies. But the idea is, is not to convert that into a closed living space by any means.
Any other questions? Yes, Elizabeth.
I guess I would, I, I'm, I'm looking at the pictures of the porch and I, in, in the detail of it, it's, it's really interesting and attractive to me. I guess I'm curious how, um, well, I, I want to hear a little more of your thinking about how your, your original plan was to take it off.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth, you, you broke up. Can I ask you to repeat that?
Sure, um, I'm, I'm curious to hear a little more about your thinking in when, when you originally thought you would just take it off and how you've, how you've sort of arrived at a different conclusion. I'd just like to hear a little more explanation of that.
That, that's a fair question. I'm actually not a resident of Michigan. I grew up in Michigan. I went to school in Michigan. I grew up in New York. I only saw the property once before I purchased it and during this whole, whole COVID lockdown, I actually moved my family here. It wasn't until the construction began that I had a chance to really look at it again. A lot of it I was just doing online. So it, it really came about because I had a chance to meet with the GC and I think as we learned more about the property and what things needed to be fixed or not fixed, it really came from a, you know, it's actually, it's a nice porch and, and we should try to get a ZBA, whereas initially what we wanted to do was when we made the decision to convert it to duplex, you know, the instructions or the direction I gave to the architect is, hey, let's just make sure that we don't need any kind of variances. So when we originally planned it, I just wanted to make sure that we put, we fit fully in the all corners of the regulatory framework. And it really wasn't until, like I said, I came back and, you know, we've been staying here during this whole COVID crisis with my parents that I had a chance to really look at the porch. that I had a chance to really look at the porch, I think, a few more times. And that's what resulted in the change of my change of heart.
Thank you for that. That makes a whole lot more sense. I really I appreciate that explanation because looking at the pictures of the porch, like it really it does look lovely. I I share Dave DeVarty's fondness for front porch or for porches generally.
Dave, go ahead.
This is a question for John. If this is granted as an alteration to a non-conforming structure, let's say this owner or a future owner wanted to enclose the porch and turn it into interior living space. Would that require coming back to us for a variance since it would be in the setback? Or wouldn't it not for an alteration?
I'm thinking. So section 5.32.2, they would. And the reason why is because they would be creating additional floor area being fit for occupancy.
Okay, so. Okay, we're still in questioning, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could, could I add a comment to to that as well?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just a quick comment. I mean, right now each unit has six bedrooms. I think from an economic incentive perspective, whether it's me or another future owner, I mean, they could certainly do it for personal reasons, but from a pure economic value to cover that porch, I don't think it would necessarily increase materially any additional revenue. So I'm not saying people, you know, I'm not going to do it for sure, but someone else in the future may do it. I don't think they would do it for economic reasons.
Right, it could not be turned into a bedroom for a seventh bedroom because six bedrooms or six unrelated people per unit is the maximum for this zoning district.
Chris?
What's the dimension from the clad wall, not the not the chimney, but from the clavoured wall out to the edge?
I believe that's 22 feet across by 11 feet deep.
Okay, I was thinking, golly, could you pull that face of that porch back and still have a porch, but still remain inside the setback and you wouldn't have much of a porch left?
Yeah, it's a fairly deep porch and it runs across, you know, a segment of the house.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, please call in now and raise your hand. If you have already called in, please raise your hand and staff will call on you for comment. There are no callers. All right, thanks, Kristin. With that said, we are in discussion. Todd?
Yes, I have three comments. One, I don't think it's our job to second guess building permits. So while it appeared to be a little bit of gamesmanship, the building permits of the purview of the building department. And if they feel something was gained or wasn't done straight up, that would be theirs to issue. It's not something that we should weigh here. Number two, lawyers have a fancy word, economic waste. My initial comment was they already have the porch. It's a nice porch. Why tear it down? And my third comment is if you got a house with 12 people living in it, whether they're adults, kids or a mixture, the porch in the summer is going to be nice. Stuff's going to happen on a porch with 12 people. So I'm in favor of letting them keep the porch.
Dave?
Most people here, although Julia is new, know my predisposition to favor porches. This is a pre-existing porch, so of course I don't want it torn down. It's an alteration as opposed to a variance request. So it's a much more lenient standards that we have to meet to approve it. And most importantly, if somebody now or in the future, a future owner were to come and try to enclose it, they would have to come before the zoning board for a variance. All to me weigh in favor of a vote. Yes, on this, so I will be voting yes.
Any further discussion? Yeah, Elizabeth?
I the only mystery to me was how you would start out with the idea to rip it off and then change your mind and put it back. And the explanation from the petitioner was it sealed the deal for me like I and I I agree with Todd's point that I don't I don't like the idea of the waste of ripping down something that's quite nice. It would be one thing if it was like falling apart and falling to bits and not very nice, but the fact that it's as nice it is as it is. I I'm I appreciate the sentiment of the petitioner realizing that, you know, it's worth the trouble of coming here and asking for a variance to preserve something that that seems nice. So I'm inclined to support this.
Any other comment or are we ready for a motion? Dave?
So I'll make the motion. ZBA 20-015 120 Packard Street. Alteration to a non-conforming structure. The zoning board of appeals hereby grants relief from section 5.32.2 alteration or 5.32.2 alteration to a non-conforming structure to allow the existing 22 foot by 11 foot covered porch on the east side of the home to remain in its current location.
I have a motion. Do I have support? Support from Chris? Julia?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Charlotte? I also vote yes. Dave?
DeVarty, yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
The request is granted.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone.
Moving on to public comment, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in general? If so, please call in and raise your hand. No callers? All right, thanks, Kristin. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Do I have support?
Support.
Support from Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Bye bye.
Bye, have a good.